Good evening. This, the fifteenth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Our invocation, who's giving, nobody's giving, we're going to just have a moment of silence instead of the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen Scott, Henry Schleifer, Middleton Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Riceinger, Costello Stokes, Clark, Mr. President, Weaver Quaram.
Okay, this evening we have Mr. Finney from the basketball tournament. Want to welcome him as he makes his presentation.
Counsel President, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm LaRon Finney with the Finn Group, but the reason we're here today is to talk about the basketball tournament and more importantly, the Dare Giving that's affiliated with the basketball tournament. We have been very fortunate to lobby TBT based in Boston to hold the semifinals in $2 million championship game here in Baltimore. And as we brought this item to Baltimore, we were intentional about the events taking place, one, at Coppin University where the $2 million championship will take place, and then we've created a very innovative Dare Giving consisting of health and wellness, jobs and entrepreneurship, and a complete community transformation in the Upton Pin North area. All we've asked of the Baltimore City politicians, the residents, the community, is that we get behind this event. This is a rare opportunity where we can be proactive and change the narrative of what people think and say about the city that we love. We'll be on a national spotlight for five days as ESPN will carry all two games at Coppin State University. They will capture the Dare Giving and then run a promo of that Dare Giving live on ESPN during the championship game on August 3rd. Again, the semifinals and championship game will be at Coppin State University, August 1st and August 3rd. August 2nd is the Dare Giving. Will be at Mondamon where we have over sixty health vendors in conjunction with the Baltimore City Health Department to do education screenings and information sharing and resources. Will be at Coppin State University for our jobs and entrepreneurial piece in conjunction with Ray Lewis in the Baltimore 1000. We have fifty vendors secured for that, and we have been guaranteed to source three-hundred-and-fifty jobs to Baltimore residents. And then finally, we'll do a cleanup in the Upton Pin North area. We're going to go from North Avenue to the Billie Holiday, and we have twelve projects that we will undertake in conjunction with the Upton Pin North Community Association where we will clean up, refurbish the avenue market, and more importantly, engage the young folks within their community. So again, all council members, we need you to get behind this event, to let your constituents know that it's here in Baltimore, and to be the biggest cheerleaders. That's all we asking. This event is on national TV, has now cost the city one dime. We need the folks who love the city to get behind and support it.
Thank you. We look forward to coming to see all that talent we have.
Yes.
Okay, you playing?
No.
We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal proceedings from the June 19th, city council meetings on the council member's desk.
They're motioned to approve the journal. Motion by Henry, second by Councilman Costello. All the favor of adopting the journal say aye. Those opposed, native motion to carry the journal, is adopted. Executive nominations.
EA seventeen dash zero zero four six, Helen Holden, member, City of Baltimore, Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees.
This has been assigned to executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero four seven, Teresa Epps Cummings, Esquire, Member Ethics Board.
This has been assigned to executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero four eight, Pamela Marie Salisbury, Member Civil Service Commission.
This has been assigned to executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero four nine, Aaron N. Tomarcio, Member Civil Service Commission.
This has been assigned to executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five zero, Elva Elizabeth Tillman, Member, Board of Directors, Parking Authority.
This has been assigned to executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five one, Pierce J. Flanagan IV, Member, Board of Directors, Parking Authority.
This has been assigned to executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five two, Daniel A. Williamson, Member, Board of Directors, Parking Authority.
This has been assigned to executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five three, Michael Braverman, Director, Department of Housing and Community Development, Sixth District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee.
EA seventeen dash zero zero five four, Michelle Porcel, Director, Department of Transportation, Eleventh District.
This has been assigned to the executive appointments committee. Bills to be introduced.
Maron City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero nine two, Morgan State University approving application for designation of a RISE Zone granting enhanced local property tax credit for the purpose of approving the designation of the Morgan State University as a qualified institution under state's Regional Institution Strategic Enterprise Zone Program, approving and joining in application for designation of a RISE Zone at 1500 Havenwood Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, granting an enhanced local property tax credit for the property and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
Chair recognize, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This seeks to provide a significant tax benefit to a developer in the Third District, and I have not come to exact terms with the community and the developer over that, so I am deliberating about my support for this and ask the support of the council members for the position of my communities. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Dorsey, looking forward to working with you to get this taken care of, because I think it's a very worthwhile project, and I'm in agreement with you in terms of property owners who are not taking care of their properties benefiting from development from, you know, other entities. Same thing happened in East Baltimore that I'm still not happy with, so I do understand that, but I do think that we can work towards a resolution for this in terms of low end, the cap from eighty to fifty or whatever, in order that they won't, you know, benefit greatly on this project. So this has been assigned to Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine three, zoning appeals to zoning board corrective for the purpose of deleting certain court imposed statutory provisions since rendered inoperative by Chapter 596 Acts of 2017, which direct persons agree by land use decisions of the planning commission to appeal those decisions to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals rather than seeking their judicial review, conforming the new zoning code to decades of city practice and procedures that recognize the final administrative status of the planning commission's decisions and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine four, sale of property NS Eastern Avenue Underpass NWC Macon Street for the purpose of authorizing the Marion City Council Baltimore to sell, a deal of public private sale, all its interest in certain property known as NS Eastern Avenue Underpass NEC Macon Street and all the need of public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the comptroller.
Chair recognize, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I mean, I'm sorry, Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just simply rise to ask that the Chair of the Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee wait to hear from both Councilman Cohen and I about a briefing on this issue before moving forward.
You haven't been briefed?
No, sir. We're getting it. We talked to Mr. Horton at lunch today, and we're setting it up.
Okay. So Chair Lady, don't move it until there's some conversation with the two council people. This has been assigned to Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine five, Public Ethics Law, City Board of Liquor License Commissioners Conformance to New State Law for the purpose of amending the Baltimore City Public Ethics Law to comply with Chapter 519, 2017 Acts of the General Assembly, with subjects, the members of and employees of virtually all local liquor control boards and local boards of liquor license commissioners, including the Baltimore City Board of Liquor License Commissioners, to the restrictions and requirements of Maryland Public Ethics Law and consequently, under the exclusive jurisdiction of the State Ethics Commissioner, the State Ethics Commission, and providing for a special effective date coinciding with the effective date of Chapter 519. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the Baltimore City Ethics Board.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine six, zoning after-hours establishment lounges for the purpose of allowing certain after-hour establishments and certain lounges only in certain commercial and industrial zoning districts, defining certain terms, imposing certain standards, providing for a special effective date, and general relating to the zoning and development laws of Baltimore City. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
Maron City Council Resolution seventeen dash zero zero nine seven, charter amendment, tenant legal assistant fund for the purpose of authorizing the establishment of a continuing non-lapsing tenant legal assistant fund to be used exclusively to assist low-income tenants with housing-related legal services authorized in the Marion City Council to dedicate revenue to the tenant legal assistant fund by ordinance and submitting this amendment to qualified voters of the city for adoption or rejection. Sponsored Stokes, President Young, Costello, Bullock, Middleton, Henry, Pinkett, Scott, Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, Sneed, Clark, Riceinger.
Chair recognize, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. This charter amendment is to help the level of playing field in rent court. When tenants go to court, they are required to have attorney, which they normally cannot afford or represent themselves. The landlord has the option of being represented by an agent, a non-attorney or agent or property management. The amendment is to provide funds so the tenant can have legal representation in court cases. The city spent $2.7 million in 2016 for sheriff deputies to oversee nearly seventy thousand evictions. One point three million was spent on service to prevent evictions, and sixty-eight evictions were prevented. The city spent less on prevention, and I think this is a charter amendment. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting me on this charter amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine eight, water bills for storing informal conferences for the purpose of requiring the Director of Public Works to provide informal conferences to certain customers seeking an abatement of water charges before water service is cut off for non-payment or other actions are taken to collect on delinquent water accounts, clarifying and conform related provisions, and general relating to city water billing. Sponsors Clark, Bullock, Middleton, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Scott, Burnett, Cohen, Stokes, Dorsey, Sneed, Riceinger.
Please note, Council President is co-sponsor. Chair recognize, Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Mr. President and members of the council, thank you for your support and cosponsorship. This is an effort to restore the informal conference tradition at the water billing office of the Department of Public Works. It was actually in effect for a long time informally. This city council in its last term asked that it be authorized by regulation of the Department of Public Works and Finance. It was, but of recent times, it was discontinued, deregulated, and removed, and disappeared. Now we're in a new administration, a new term, and I hope that we can distinguish ourselves by making water billing personal again, a conversation among people, customers, and the city. What the informal conference was and is to be designed to be is a place where you can call, make an appointment, come down, and bring your bills and your documentation and your concerns with you to try to get an extraordinary water bill waived down to legitimate size. Maybe there was a leak, you bring your plumber's bill, or you bring the documentation where the plumber says, "No problem here. Must be something in the city system." And so basically, it's a conversation, but it's official, it's recorded, and the recommendations go, as they always have, to the Director of Public Works so that he can make the final determination based on neutral hearing officers' recommendations about a bill. You know, it's one thing to call up on the phone, and the people that at water billing work all the time, they work hard, and once you've waited your forty-five minutes, you talk to a nice person, but that person has to get to that next call as well. It's good to have a once every year or appeal by internet, but so many of the people I represent are not using internet every day for their daily work, or if they're using it, they're using it for their daily work and cannot pursue personal needs on their work internet. So what happens is, we've lost the personal touch, and I know that the Department of Public Works cares about reaching out to people in need and identifying them and helping them. This is the best way to do it. They'll find the way to get to an informal hearing and to sit down and explain their problem and what they've done to try to solve it. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. President, for your cosponsorship. I also look forward to working with you on your more omnibus bill that will be coming in so that we're in sync. Thank you.
Please note that Councilman Costello is a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine nine, zoning condition use banquet hall, the second floor rear area and adjoining fence and patio, 5604 York Road, for the purpose of preventing subject to certain conditions, the establishment maintenance and operation of a banquet hall on the second floor rear area and the adjoining fence and patio on the property known as 5604 York Road, as outlined and written in the company plat and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Henry.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero zero, repeal of ordinance 11-571, the District at Canton Crossing Plant and Development, for the purpose of repealing ordinance 11-571 is amended by ordinances 12-13 and 12-86, which designated certain properties as a business plant and development known as the District at Canton Crossing and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Cohen.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero one, RPP Area Two Plan Amendment for the purpose of amending the parking management plan for RPP Area Two to accept certain parking lanes that areas permit parking restrictions and correcting related language. Sponsor Dorsey.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero two, Complete Streets for the purpose of requiring the Transportation Department to construct and operate a comprehensive complete street transportation system, creating a complete streets coordinating council to make certain recommendations and oversee certain activities regarding the complete streets transportation system, establishing certain design standards and requiring the Transportation Department to use the latest and best design standards in constructing and operating a complete streets transportation system, requiring the Transportation Department in consultation with the coordinating council and after public notice and a public comment period to adopt a complete streets manual to carry out this ordinance, requiring that the Transportation Director in consultation with the coordinating council to prepare an annual complete streets report assessing the status of the complete streets transportation system and to conduct public meetings and other community engagement and outreach activities to present the complete streets annual report to the public and to solicit input specifying that the requirements of this ordinance apply to all project phases undertaken by and the authority of or subject to the supervision of the Transportation Department for the improvement of any street subject to certain exceptions, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date, and general relating to the construction operation of a transportation system accommodating all travel modes that ensures the safety, security, comfort, and convenience for all users. Sponsors Dorsey, Bullock, Middleton, Henry, Pinkett, Scott, Burnett, Cohen, Clark, Sneed.
Chair recognize, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Paul. That was quite a bill title. Minute and twenty-four seconds. You'd think after working on one bill of this size for six or seven months, I'd have a prepared statement, but it's just been my life since even before taking office to get this bill into this shape. It's taken at least four substantial iterations of this through hundreds of meetings with different stakeholders. We have convened meetings individually and in groups with advocacy groups at the level of kind of the AARP, the Maryland Building Industry Association, the Greater Baltimore Committee, and other traditionally influential folks who have some interest in the built environment, as well as kind of geographically-based organizations from around the city like No Boundaries Coalition, Southeast CDC, Southwest Partnership, and up in my neck of the woods, Harbell, and further into neighborhood associations throughout many parts of the city to talk about complete streets, what it is, and to help people to start to think about how we shift from being a city that prioritizes the movement of cars in high volumes and high speeds to become a city that seeks to accommodate the needs of people of other transit modes. And complete streets really are roads that, and a public space that seeks to accommodate the needs of all regardless of mode, their economic capacity, where they happen to live or need to get to, you know, what an individual's physical ability may be, and really get us into a city that is better promoting health, safety, economic development, and a number of other things, job creation, job access, that are built environment influences. And I'll just, I'll finish by kind of bringing up the analogy that I have used in many of the community meetings that I have attended and convened, which is to talk about crab CoCo's, yeah, CoCo's is in my district. I'm going to have a party, and I'm going to invite a hundred people, and I know upfront that for dietary restrictions of various reasons, eighty of those hundred people cannot or will not consume crab cakes. And I also know that those eighty people are the hungriest people that are going to show up to my party. And then I decide to call CoCo's and order crab cakes and nothing but crab cakes anyway. What kind of a person am I? Use as many four letters as you need. But that's, in many cases, the kind of city that we are.
Crab cake.
Thank you, Ray. You agree. She knows. That, in many cases, in too many unfortunate cases, is really the kind of city that we are. We have communities in which seventy and eighty percent of households lack access to cars, but we use our public resources to build and maintain the public space in those communities and connecting those communities to opportunities, primarily for cars that people in those communities do not own or even have access to. That means I don't own one, my neighbor doesn't own one, my cousin in the next neighborhood over doesn't own one, and Zipcar is not locating on the end of my block. And those communities exist solely in census tracts within historically redlined black communities. Every single historically redlined black neighborhood in Baltimore City that is majority black today has above fifty percent household non-access to cars, and it's only within those statistical areas that we find census tracts where neighborhoods lack access at rates of seventy and eighty percent. This bill is about building a Baltimore city that works for everybody who lives in it. Thank you for your support on this.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero three, rezoning 1700 West 41st Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1700 West 41st Street, as outlined and written in the company plat, from the I-2 zoning district to the IMU zoning district. Sponsor Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero four, zoning condition use tavern 1700 West 41st Street for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a tavern on the property known as 1700 West 41st Street is outlined and written in the company plat. Sponsor Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero five, zoning condition use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R. zoning district variances 2824 Druid Ho Avenue, for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R. zoning district on the property known as 2824 Druid Ho Avenue is outlined and written in the company plat and granting variances from certain lot area per dwelling unit gross floor area and off-street parking requirements. Sponsor Pinkett.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero six, rezoning 3601 through 3605 Park Heights Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 3601 through 3605 Park Heights Avenue, as outlined and written in the company plat, from the R-6 zoning district to the C-1 zoning district. Sponsor Middleton.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero seven, zoning condition use retail goods establishment, 3601 through 3605 Park Heights Avenue, for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a retail goods establishment on the property known as 3601 through 3605 Park Heights Avenue is outlined and written in the company plat. Sponsor Middleton.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero eight, urban renewal Mount Washington Village Business Area Amendment for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Mount Washington Village Business Area to modify the boundaries of the renewal plan, delete certain provisions from the plan pertaining to the powers of acquisition and condemnation made obsolete by Section 12, 105.1 of the Real Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, to revise certain exhibits to reflect the boundary modifications of the plan and to reflect a change in zoning upon approval by separate ordinance for a portion of the property known as 1700 South Road, and delete a certain exhibit made obsolete by Section 12, 105.1 of Real Property Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor Schleifer.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one zero nine, zoning a portion of 1700 South Road, the portion for the purpose of changing the zoning for a portion of the property known as 1700 South Road is outlined and written in the company plat, from the R-1D zoning district to the OR1 zoning district. Sponsor Schleifer.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one one zero, Baltimore City Landmark List exterior is our Savior Lutheran Church. For the purpose of designating our Savior Lutheran Church, 3301, the Alameda is a historical landmark exterior. Sponsor Clark.
Chair recognize, Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, our Savior Lutheran Church certainly deserve, where are we here? Oh, yes. Certainly deserves landmarking, which it has traveled far to get. It has been through planning, it has been through the process, and it has stood the test of history better than well. One of the ways it has done so is back at the time of redlining and a lot of other evils in our community. This originally white congregation joined with an originally African-American congregation to form what is today Savior Lutheran Church. They worked together to fight the redlining, to fight some of the evils and fears that were going along with it, because they are located right at the cornerstone of the northeast part of Baltimore City, right there at 33rd and the Alameda, where all that evil began. And they are there to this day, and they are the meeting place every month, every two months, pardon me, of the Ednurgardens Lakeside Civic Association. So I'm looking forward to the hearing, and I hope you'll all be part of it, because you'll hear some great stories of the history of northeast Baltimore City and how to make it work.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero one one one, weapons prohibiting handguns near places of public assembly for the purpose of prohibiting the wearing, carrying, or knowingly transporting handguns near certain places of public assembly, creating certain exceptions, defining a certain term, establishing a certain mandatory penalty, setting a special effective date, and general relating to handguns. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration, President Young, Costello, Middleton, Riceinger, Stokes.
Thank you. This is about a hundred and almost a hundred and eighty-five murders in the city of Baltimore. This is, huh? One eighty-seven. Almost two hundred. Probably be four hundred before the summer is over, before the year is over. This is about carrying illegal guns in the city of Baltimore. It's already a law that says that you cannot carry an illegal gun in the city of Baltimore, state law that refers to that. And this is not about color or race, as some folk has suggested. It's about illegal guns on the street of Baltimore. The law says that you cannot have a legal gun in the city of Baltimore unless you have a proper permit, a permit to carry. With the increase, increasing murders in this city, this is something that we want to put in the toolbox that could give, that will give the... to put in the toolbox that could give, that will give the state's attorney and the judge the option of, under conviction, if they are convicted, the state's attorney can give them the one-year mandatory, which means the judge have to honor that. He cannot give them probation before judgment. And let me be clear, most of the shootings and murders in this city are by repeat offenders. And I know people waving signs, no mandatory sentencing, but if it hadn't affected your family, like it affected my family, I had three murders in my family by illegal handguns, two, three nephews, and one of my first cousins who were killed at the hands of her boyfriend. So unless it hits your family, if it hits your family, you want the maximum amount of time served, okay? And that's what this bill would do. So one-year mandatory, to give them a cooling-off period, you know? I mean, people, they get these little slap-on arrests, they right back out on the street and murdering your son, your nephew, your niece, or somebody in your immediate family. Unless it hits your family, don't complain. This has been assigned to Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee. We had a long hearing already in the back, in our lunchroom, and we will have a hearing, and it will be announced by the chairman later on this evening. Everything that we do in here have had public input. Shorty, if you keep it up, I'm gonna ask that you be removed. Resolution to be included.
City Council Resolution 17-0032R, potential negative impacts of the proposed federal budget on Baltimore City for the purpose of condemning the inequitable and shortsighted proposed federal budget, calling on Maryland delegation to the 115th United States Congress to oppose the current budget proposals and requesting that representatives from city agencies most likely to be negatively impacted by proposed federal budget cuts to appear before the city council to discuss how the cuts might impact their work with the citizens of Baltimore and what mitigating steps can be and are being taken to continue vital services threatened by the current federal administration. Sponsor President Young, Bullock, Middleton, Henry, Pinkett, Scott, Costello, Cohen, Stokes, Dorsey, Burnett, Sneed, Clark.
Well, this is self-explanatory. We're asking now, delegation from the state, from the, from our federal delegation to oppose any cuts, federal cuts to the city. And we're calling on each of our city agencies to come in to see how these were, these proposed cuts would affect their budgets. And I'm quite sure it's gonna be devastating if Mr. Trump gets the budget that he had just presented to Congress. So we're asking for immediate adoption of this resolution. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encourage the rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 17-0032R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encourage this resolution is adopted. I said it at the launch, and I'm here moving on, okay?
City Council Resolution 17-0033R, Human Trafficking Task Force for the purpose of calling for a multi-agency and citywide task force to provide coordinating opportunities for addressing sex trafficking and complete a strategic fan, and complete a strategic plan for addressing human trafficking and curtailing of traffic. Sponsor Burnett, Henry, Pinkett, Scott, Costello, Dorsey, Cohen, Middleton, Stokes, Sneed, Bullock, Clark, Reissinger.
Please note Council President Young is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We can give you time.
Okay. No, we're good. So we held a hearing a few months back with the Education and Youth Committee on this issue of human trafficking, especially as it has impacted our young people in the city of Baltimore. And from that hearing, a lot of great solutions came out, but was also clear was that there needed to be more collaboration, inter-agency collaboration between both city agencies, the state's attorney's office, the police department. And so, one, I want to thank my colleagues for supporting this resolution, and I look forward to working with our agency heads to develop a comprehensive plan to address human trafficking in the city of Baltimore and develop some policy proposals and administrative things that we can do to support our young people and to support survivors of trafficking and prevent it moving forward. And with that, I would like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Scott, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encourage the rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Dorsey, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 17-0033R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Most encourage this resolution is adopted. So what? So what?
City Council Resolution 17-0034R, request for state action, set a strong nitrogen oxides limit for the wheel-brader Baltimore incinerator. For the purpose of urging the Maryland Department of Environment to set a nitrogen oxides pollution limit for the wheel-brader Baltimore incinerator that is no higher than 150 ppm standard on a 24-hour average that has been adopted by Connecticut and New Jersey and proposed in Massachusetts, or if at all possible significantly lower than 150 ppm in order to provide maximum air quality benefits to residents of Baltimore. Sponsor Reissinger, Clark, Henry, Pinkett, Scott, Costello, President Young, Cohen, Middleton, Stokes, Dorsey, Burnett, Sneed.
Chair recognizes, please note that Councilman Bullock, I mean Chairman Bullock is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Reissinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the purpose of this resolution is to have a hearing because Bresco is a violation of air pollution standards. Bresco not only burns trash from Baltimore City, but also burns trash from Baltimore County, Inona County, and Howard County. Mr. President and members, MDE is working to set new limits on Bresco. So I want the council to send a strong letter and resolution to MDE to set strict limits on Bresco. We want, the city of Baltimore wants a state-of-the-art facility. This not only affects residents in my district, but the whole city of Baltimore. Mr. President, I just want to say that it was at a meeting that Bresco had made a statement that if the limits, the limits are too low, that they would move out, and I say, go ahead and move. I also want to thank my colleagues who co-sponsored this resolution. Thank you.
All right. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 17-0035R, investigative hearing, employees' retirement system funding ratio. For the purpose of calling on representatives from the Baltimore City Employees Retirement System to appear before the city council to discuss the system's current low funding ratio and its plans to ensure that the city will be able to meet all of its retirement obligations to its employees without placing an unreasonable burden on city taxpayers. Sponsor Middleton, President Young, Bullock, Costello, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Cohen, Scott, Stokes, Dorsey, Burnett, Sneed, Clark, Reissinger.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is being introduced to take a closer look at factors, the employer and employee contributions and asset management that impact the funding ratio and to call for a plan to move the ERS retirement system plan to a 100% funding ratio over a reasonable period of time so that the system remains sustainable. Right now, the funding ratio is at 71.2%, and which is down point, down 0.5%. And we want to try to maintain it at 80%, at least 80%. So we, they have not been in to hear us or to present before us in a long time, so I thought it was best that we bring the leaders of the retirement system before us to just do an explanation and an update.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Resolution 17-0036R, request for state action, strengthening penalties for wearing, carrying, or transporting a handgun. For the purpose of calling on the Baltimore City delegation to the Maryland General Assembly to act to strengthen penalties for wearing, carrying, or transporting a handgun by securing the enactment of legislation that limits discretion to suspend sentences and increase the penalties for repeat offenders who continue to illegally possess handguns. Sponsor President Young, Henry, Pinkett, Scott, Costello, Middleton, Stokes, Sneed, Clark, Reissinger.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
I'd suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Scott, all those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encourage the rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilwoman.
And I'd like to move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Scott, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 17-0036R, say aye. Those opposed, this motion encourage this resolution is adopted. You can find the consent count. Oh, please note that Councilman, Chairman Bullock is a co-sponsor. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent count? Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving the consent count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion encourage this calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Mr. President, I move short titles for the remainder of the meeting, even if it's not gonna help Paul with Council Dorsey's.
Second by Chairman Scott, all those in favor of suspending rules to have short titles, say aye. All opposed, nay. The courage. We will now move the bills on second read, the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0067, supplemental state fund operating appropriations, State's Attorney, $1,190,562.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. On June 20th, all of these hearings were held on June 26th. I don't want to repeat myself each time. We held this hearing with respect to a grant that came in for the state's attorney's office. I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Burnett, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approve this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0087, supplemental general fund operating appropriation for our department, $6 million.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to these three bills that are upcoming, all having been heard on June 26th, these were part of our agreement with the administration as part of our budget negotiations and that we would expeditiously hear all supplemental appropriations and move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approve this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0088, supplemental general fund operating appropriation, Police Department, $9 million.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
I move the bill favorably.
Second by Chairman Scott, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0089, general fund operating, general fund appropriation transfer MR Debt Service to the Police Department, $9 million.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Cohen, all those in favor of moving this bill favorably, say aye. All those opposed, nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0051, city streets opening East Fairmount Avenue and a portion of Ashworth Street.
Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on June 29th to hear the two bills, the development of the old Handler Creamery in the Jonestown community. We'll be moving both of these bills favorable without amendment. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Stokes, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approve this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0052, city streets closing East Fairmount Avenue and a portion of Ashworth Street.
Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Stokes, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most encourage this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0090, Baltimore City Landmark List Exteriors Harry O. Wilson House.
Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill this morning. There are technical amendments that are on your desks. I move the amendments favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approve the bill is amended. Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Yes, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approve. Chair recognizes Chairman Bullock.
Yes, I move to invoke Rule 12-1 to advance this bill from second read to third read on the same day.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor of moving City Council Bill 17-0090 from second to third read on the same night, say aye. Those opposed, nay.
Thank you.
The odds have it the motion encourage in Council Bill 17-0090 will be voted on when we get to the third read, a portion of the agenda. What is this? Judiciary Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0019, bike lanes, increased parking penalties.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. All five of these bills in committee were heard on June 26th as well. This bill, we held two or three hearings on. There were some unanswered questions from the Department of Transportation as well as BPD. DOT and BPD did come back on the 26th and answer those questions as a satisfaction of the committee. At this time, I'd like to move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Stokes, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. All opposed, nay. The most approve this bill moves to third read. Have to have a, okay, this bill moves to third read. Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
City Council Bill 17-0034, Metropolitan District of Baltimore County, Extension 165.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This bill moves to third read.
City Council Bill 17-0064, Commemorative Days, Henrietta Lacks Day.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to defer to Councilwoman Sneed.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you, Mr. President. We wanted to make a floor amendment that everyone have on their desk. It's to strike October 4th and substitute August 1st for Henrietta Lacks Day. And so, can I get a second?
No. He has, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President.
She want to move a floor amendment.
Mr. President, I move the amendment.
Second by Chairman Sneed, all those in favor of approving this floor amendment, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approve this bill is amended. Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Second by Council Chair Sneed, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves to third read.
City Council Bill 17-0069, city property renaming John Eager Howard Elementary to Dorothy I Height Elementary School.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approve this bill moves to third read.
City Council Bill 17-0078, private streets naming and unnamed 190-foot street located in the vicinity of 301 East Cromwell Street, Ryce Street.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first in what will be many street namings at Port Covington. At this time, I'd like to move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approve this bill moves to third read. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0042, zoning condition use conversion of one dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R- zoning district variance 2304 North Fulton Avenue.
Chair recognizes Chairman Reissinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approve. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Chairman Reissinger.
Mr. President, there's amendments to this bill on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all those in favor of approving this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approve this bill is amended. Chair recognizes Chairman Reissinger.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This bill moves to third read.
City Council Bill 17-0062, zoning condition use conversion of one dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R- zoning district, 2216 Utah Place.
Chair recognizes Chairman Reissinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approve. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Chairman Reissinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approve. This bill moves to third read.
City Council Bill 17-0075, zoning legislative authorizations corrective.
Chair recognizes Chairman Reissinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Vice President Middleton, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approve. This bill moves to third read.
City Council Bill 17-0080, rezoning 127, 129, 133, and 135 West West Street and 1220 Race Street.
Chair recognizes Chairman Reissinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Costello, all those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approve. The finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Chairman Reissinger.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello, all those in favor of approving the finding of facts, All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approve this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero eight one. Res zoning fifty-seven seventeen and fifty-seven twenty-three Harford Road.
Chair recognize Chairman Reissinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The most approve the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognize Chairman Reissinger.
Move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The most approve this bill moves to third reader. Third reader requiring invocation of Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine zero. Baltimore City Landmark List Exteriors, Harry O. Wilson House. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero two seven.
Councilman Henry, do you want to speak to that? Okay.
Seventeen dash zero zero two seven. Bus lanes and stops prohibited parking. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero six eight. Waterfront Management District Extension District. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognize Councilman Scott, followed by Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to say that the Public Safety Committee will hold this quarterly legislative oversight on the Police Department and its efforts to combat crime in Baltimore on Tuesday, August the eighth at four P. M.
Chair recognize Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education and Youth Committee will hold its hearing, its legislative oversight hearing on setting our long-term agenda on July twenty-sixth at three P. M. in the chambers.
Any more committee announcement? Committee, uh, chair recognize Chairman Snead.
The Labor Committee has rescheduled the hearing for legislative oversight seventeen dash zero zero two one for the purpose of inviting and pertinent agency representatives to come before the committee to discuss the feasibility for utilizing in-house staff such as engineers, architects, and other licensed professionals instead of relying on external or non-staff facilities. The hearing will be held on Thursday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen at one P. M. in the council chambers.
Thank you, Chairwoman. That's something that I've been pushing for a long time. Maybe we can get something done about that. Because we have people within our own agency that can do this work, but yet we pay outside contractors to do it. Either they want to be city workers or we want to hire within our own agencies. But we have the expertise there. I want to take it even further, that we create our own engineering division, which in the city of Baltimore, our own architects. Our own, we have it right here. We just don't utilize it. All right. Chair recognize Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspended rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth at nine forty-five A. M. Bill number seventeen dash zero zero nine five. Public Ethics Law, City Board of Liquor License Commissioners Conformance to New State Law. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth at ten A. M. in chambers on Bill seventeen dash zero one one one. Weapons prohibiting handguns near places of public assembly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognize Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on July the nineteenth at ten thirty, twenty A. M. on Lena S. Nguyen as the Commissioner of the Health Department. On Wednesday, July the twenty-sixth, Executive Appointments will hold a hearing on July the twenty-sixth at ten twenty A. M. for Mary Tally, Director of Human Resources. On Wednesday, August the twenty-third, Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing at ten A. M. for Michael Braveman, Director of Housing and Community Development. On Wednesday, August the twenty-third, the Executive Appointments will hold a hearing on Michelle Porcio, Director of Department of Transportation. Wednesday, September the sixth at ten A. M., the Executive Appointments will hold a hearing on Helen Holt, is a member of the Employee Retirement Board of Trustees. On Wednesday, September the sixth, there will be a hearing at ten A. M. for the Park Authority for Eva Tillman, Pierce Flanigan, and Danielle Williamson. On Wednesday, September the thirteenth at ten A. M., the Executive Appointments will hold a hearing on Terry Combs on the Ethics Board. And on Wednesday, September the thirteenth at ten eight, ten twenty A. M., the Executive Appointments will hold a hearing for the Civil Service Commission for Pamela Salisbury and Erin Tomacchio. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognize Chairman Reissinger. You got a committee here.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a legislative oversight hearing on Wednesday, August the second at one P. M. in the council chambers. This informational hearing is regards to medicinal marijuana dispensaries in Baltimore City. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero, let me back up. I'm sorry, Mr. President. I move for suspension of rules ten dash two and ten dash three.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Chair recognize, I mean Chairman Reissinger.
The committee will hold a hearing of Bill seventeen dash zero zero nine six on Wednesday, August the ninth at one P. M. in the council chambers. This is a zoning after hours establishments and lounges. The committee will hold a hearing of Bill seventeen dash zero zero two three, Wednesday, August the sixteenth at one P. M. in the council chambers. This is a informational hearing on the proposed replacement of the Baltimore and Potomac Tunnel. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero seven two on Wednesday, August the twenty-third at one P. M. in the council chambers. This is a zoning, it's a conditional use conversion of a one dwelling unit to a two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district located at twenty-two twenty-nine Calo Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognize Chairman Burnett, I mean Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Thursday, September fourteenth, Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be hearing Bill seventeen zero zero seven seven at two P. M. in council chambers, and that is the repeal of the Rosemont Urban Renewal Area and Plan. On that same day at two-ten P. M., we'll be hearing seventeen dash zero zero seven six, Urban Renewal Coldstream Homestead Montebello Amendment.
Thank you. Regular announcement, chair recognize, oh, you have an announcement? I asked, I was on this side. Chair recognize Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill seventeen zero zero two four, Thursday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, at ten A. M. here in council chambers. It's the sale of property for three oh one, three eleven North Warwick Avenue. We heard this bill previously and had to take care of some business with the councilperson of the area, and I think I want, would you like to say anything? The date is Thursday, August twenty-fourth at ten A. M. So, now we're just going to have a hearing to finalize the discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Regular announcement, I want to wish Councilman Henry an early happy birthday. His birthday is August the second, but we don't have your gift yet. So, Kevra would have it before the hearing is over. So, just want to wish you a happy birthday. Chair recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, as the president mentioned earlier, we have currently one hundred and eighty-seven homicides in the city of Baltimore. I would ask that Council Vice President Middleton offer a moment of silence for those families, and just would like to further state that all those families, I think, have all of our deepest sympathy, but it's my personal belief, however, that it would be better in the greater interest of the citizens of Baltimore and the city of Baltimore for us to continue to talk about combating violence in Baltimore in a comprehensive manner, and thus to further that conversation and try to avoid some of the pitfalls of the past for us to look for immediate and immediately go to policies and things that have not worked in other places and in the past in Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognize Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow will be the four-year anniversary of the death and custody of Tyrone West, who was forty-four at the time that he died during a traffic stop in northeast Baltimore. I would ask Vice President Middleton to add his name to the list that we will remember with a moment of silence, and we would also send our best wishes to the family who has continued to try to keep Tyrone's memory alive on a weekly basis here in Baltimore.
Chair recognize Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. One word, Artscape, right? I've been announcing all kinds of art stuff here in our council meetings. Once a year, we get to brag about having the biggest free arts festival in the country. Here it comes this weekend.